Although they don't want to speak, dang it. I'm just excited for registrants. All right.
No, they don't. In support, not wishing to speak.
I have turned my mic on. We have quorum. Those of you who are virtual, I just have not called the meeting to order. Bear with this, maybe a couple minute or so before I call the meeting to order.
No speakers to registrants. And now I'm just trying to find my thing I didn't bring around because I was so much. Sorry, give me just a second. I want to find my attendance sheet. I have so much stuff in here. Here, send it. I'm just going to use it from the computer then.
If you could talk about registrations, then I don't have the email.
Sure, it's both item four. They're not the number item one registrants, but item four.
Okay, got it. All right. Seeing that the hour 4:30 has come and gone, I'm going to call the Common Council Executive Committee of March 19th to order and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alder Vitterver?
Here.
Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Govenderajan? Alder Conklin? Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Bennett?
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Let me make sure my mic is on so everybody can hear me. Next before, it was on before. Thank you, Alder Conklin. If anyone virtual is not hearing me well, I had feedback that my audio was not very loud earlier. But we need to approve our minutes of the last meeting of March 5th, 2024. They are in Legisstar as well as the agenda, and I would entertain a motion. Moved by Vice President Figueroa Cole, seconded by Alder Conklin. And unless I see or hear otherwise, I will assume unanimous adoption of the minute meetings? Meeting minutes. Seeing and hearing none, that is approved. Thank you. Item, Agenda Item 1, Legislative File 82532, Public Comment. We do have a number of registrants not wishing to speak, but registered in support of Agenda Item 4. So seeing that we have no one wishing to speak, I would ask the body then to make any disclosures and recusals required by our ethics code. Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to assume we're good to go and move us into our items of consideration. So the first is Agenda Item Number 2, Legislative File 82434, Amending Section 12.1331, Subset 3 of the General Ordinances related to Toulchar's forfeiture to correct inconsistencies and improper references in the city's general ordinance constituting a 2024 City Attorney's Revisors Ordinance. I'm assuming I'm turning this over to Attorney Haas.
Thank you, President Curry. So this is a revisers ordinance. Typically, we bring you a whole set of ordinances that are just being cleaned up for grammatical errors or technical changes or citations to the wrong section of an ordinance. This is a case where last fall, we had two ordinances in the queue related to towing. And the second one was that was introduced had actually been started first, and so that did not incorporate the changes of the ordinance which got passed first. And so this is just a cleanup. It's there is no substantive changes. It's just a change to make sure we are referring to the right agencies that are enforcing the towing ordinances.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Any questions? Seeing and hearing none, and also seeing that, oh, we have a hand. I'm sorry. Thank you, Vice President Figueroa Cole. Alder Evers?
Director Chair, just a process question. Curious why this had to come to CCEC? Seems to be, you know, a broader policy issue that could go directly to council and did not need to come to this body.
No, it's a good question. I think we had referred to CCEC because the revisers ordinances typically come to CCEC. Because they're not really substantive changes. We've always sent them to CCEC to just sort of check off that some body has reviewed them.
Thank you, Alder Evers. I think that was a good question, too. Are you complete? Yep. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing, hearing none, I'll move us along. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion for this. Going back to the first meeting, y'all. Can I get a motion on the item before? Motion to adopt by Vice President Figueroa Cole, seconded by Alder Conklin? All right. And unless I see or hear otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. All right, seeing and hearing none, that unanimous passes. Thank you. Now, I will move us to the third agenda item. Legislative File 75926, by title only, repealing sections of the MGO to combine the City-County Homeless Issues Committee, Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee, and the Housing Strategy Committee. Can I get a motion on the item?
Motion to put a file. Motion to put on file?
Okay, motion to put on file.
Without prejudice, right?
Without prejudice? Can't say that word.
So, an amended motion to put the item on file without prejudice by Vice President Figueroa Cole. Alder Conklin, are you amenable to that? Seconded.
Do you want me to speak to it, or?
I was going to ask, yes, Vice President.
Yes, so we had these ordinance change going around for a while, and we finally got the, we are ready for the committees to review the language on these changes. But we could not find the best path forward to change the title, to remove the homeless issues committee out of it. So we created Legisstar 82573, which will be introduced today and sent to the landlords' issues for them to review the language on the new committee. So that's all we're doing. Put in the original on file so we can change the name to clearly indicate that this is a merger between the Landlord and Tenant Issues Committee and the Housing Strategy. Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, Vice President. See a question? Alder Vitterver?
Yes, can you tell by my face that I'm questioning? I just want to try to understand this completely. Okay, so like, the goal is still the same. It's just that you need a different name for the ultimate committee? Is that what I'm hearing? That is, the goal is still to combine these committees into one? Or is, that's what I'm trying to understand?
Okay, so my original goal, the original goal was to combine three committees, but along the process, we realized that we could only combine two because one had county connections to it. But the title of the file included all three committees, which continues to create confusion. So we are ending with the two committees only and titling that to indicate the only two committees. But yes, the same intent. We're just ready to go now with the, we did the rest analysis and all that stuff were done. We're ready to share that information with everybody.
Okay, so two city committees will combine, but the city-county committee will remain as is?
The homeless issues committee will remain separate at this moment, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate the clarification.
Alder Conklin, before we go to you for a question, Attorney Haas had something he wanted to add.
Also, it's my understanding that there's been a pretty significant revision of the original ordinance, which would have resulted in a substitute that had a lot of track changes. And so I think the staff recommended, let's just start over with a fresh slate.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. Alder Conklin?
I wanted to make sure that my-
Get to your mic, Alder, please.
Today is the day. No, I wanted to make sure that my name was added to this, like, because this has been going around in the landlord committee, you know, and I'm part of that committee, so I've been supporting this. I want to make sure that my name has been a cosponsor with this, please.
The new version, Alder?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Going forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Alder Govenderajan?
Me, too, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If I'm a sponsor under the current and not the proposed, does it automatically move over? Okay. I guess I would like to be added as a sponsor, too, cosponsor. Alder Bennett?
Get out.
There we go. Thank you, Alders. All right. The motion before us again is to place on file without prejudice in consideration that we are going to start over instead of trying to follow all the track changes that have been made in conversation. Any more questions? Alder Bennett, is that still from? Yes. Or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I will assume unanimous consent unless I hear see otherwise? Not seeing any others, so the amendment to place on file without prejudice passes unanimously. Thank you. That will move us on to Agenda Item Number 4, Legislative File 81911, Amending Section 33.13, Subset 1 of the General Ordinances related to the composition of the Common Council Executive Committee to modify the appointment process for said committee. I know our lead sponsor, Alder Wahili, is joining us virtually. Alder Wahili, is it okay to go to you for an explanation of your proposed change? Or would you like me to defer to staff?
Yeah, I would like to go to me first, and then we can go to staff, Attorney Haas and Karen.
Okay, Alder, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. So this ordinance, because of equity and opportunity, I am bringing this ordinance for a change. And the reason why is currently the president has the ability to select five executive committee members and one alternate. And at the last, not, I cannot say for last year, but the year before, there's been a lot of problem in terms of how the process had been done. It was more of, you know, very uncomfortable or very, not very conducive process, which is like more of harassing the candidates who are able to, requesting to join the CCEC. So this is, I know when I put in this ordinance forward, Attorney Haas and Karen also asked me that if I was the president of the council, if I was running, and should I be the president, this will hinder my selecting of my CCEC meeting, CCEC committee. And that's part of the democracy, that we can work closely and collaboratively with the people that we disagree. And I was open to that, even if, you know, if I became the president and all five CCEC members have been selected that are completely in a disagreement with me, that will be okay because we will learn from each other and we will collaborate and work for the sake of the city and as well as for the body, which is the institution of the CCEC. Having said that, not only that, but also this will expedite the process because now when we have interviews and we send out surveys and we do interviews, and some of those interviews are very intimidating, then it takes a lot of time. And by the time we select our president or our vice president, then the CCEC committee is selected at a later date, maybe 45 days, which, you know, takes a lot of time. So this will remove those barriers in terms of having that wait time that we have to interview or select the CCEC committee. Also, this, by selecting randomly, this will create participation from the larger group for diversity of opinion, so that it's not one person or one particular group selecting the CCEC, which has happened in the last two years. So with that, I think it's fair and it's equity and also the process is more streamlined, but also we can have more collaboration within the institution of the common council. So I hope you'll support this. And Attorney Haas can explain the details of what is changing now. It's just a matter of the president having, instead of making the appointment, it's randomly selected. And again, you know, the president can have the authority to lead the agenda, and even though they might be different body, but then still the president can still lead the agenda and in terms of moving forward. So I hope you'll support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Attorney Haas, is there anything you wanted to add?
Well, we described the ordinance in the draft analysis. As Alder Wahili has said, it would just replace the process of the president appointing members to CCEC to a random selection of five members. And if there is an alternate available because the immediate past president is not in the council, then that would also be a nomination of the president and to be confirmed by the council.
Thank you, and I apologize. I did not ask for a motion on this item, so let me rewind and do that. Alder Govenderajan?
Oh, sorry, I was saving for questions.
Oh, okay. So just to repeat, sorry, folks, I did not ask for a motion on this item.
Motion to adopt?
Moved by Vice President Figueroa Cole to adopt, seconded by Alder Govenderajan? All right, now we can go into discussion. Alder Govenderajan?
Thank you. Quick question for Attorney Haas. This will lead into my discussion point. When we approve the appointments to CCEC as a, like, common council as a whole, is it 11 votes? Is it super majority votes?
It's 11 votes.
11 votes, okay. Can we also do a discussion or assist?
I'm sorry, I should have asked for questions first. Questions, discussion, comments? While you have the floor, go ahead, Alder.
Thank you. I understand the intention of this. I'm just a little hesitant because though making it random might seem like it's going to be unbiased, randomization typically creates biases that we just don't know what they are. If there is three men and three women applying for this, going for the seats, then the chances that it's all men is much, like, probability wise, it's just much more higher. And I think when we have a president and vice president able to consciously make biased decisions for a good intention, I think that is good. Because that also just goes to what matters to this council in a way. I do agree that the picking someone should not be political in nature, but more so there should be other biases that should be taken into consideration. I would suggest a different way to go about this is to instead have this randomized just to make it so when we do approve just CCEC appointments, have it 15 votes instead of 11. That way, it requires a consensus of a much broader amount of common council rather than just a simple majority. I think that would at least get much closer to making sure that the right biases are being used rather than unknown biases, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Just a question of clarification, Alder. I appreciate the suggestion, but that's not what's before us. Would you like to hear more in discussion, or would you like to propose an amended change? Oops, let me turn your microphone on, I'm sorry.
I will not be proposing an amendment. I would not be against supporting one if one was proposed.
Thank you, Alder. A little putting you on the spot, appreciate it. Alder Conklin, did you? No? Alder Evers?
Director, with all due respect to MGRI here, it is true, we're not dealing with the election of the leadership. And having sat through several elections, it's often very difficult to get to 11 votes. I can't imagine how challenging it would be to get to 15 votes. Those meetings might last all night. I do recall, though, that, you know, going back to when Saad Abbas was president, he selected his cabinet, the committee that he felt philosophically he could work with. And I think that is to preserve the right of the elected leadership. It shows no disrespect, but it is part of the, I think, the responsibility, actually, of the president and vice president to put together a committee that they feel their sufficient simpatico and relational unity that you can work with successfully. Human nature being what it is, there are situations where people simply don't get along. And I think the leadership should be, just like any cabinet, an executive branch has a right to be able to select those people they feel they could work with best. But as, just as former President Abbas selected those that he chose and preferred to work with, I think the future president should be allowed to do the same. So I, with deep appreciation for the order from the Senate District who put this forth, I will not be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
I mean, that's basically what I was going to say. And I think it's quite admirable and altruistic to want to get to a level where this is not politicized. However, I agree with the sentiment that ultimately, the council by majority vote elects a council president of whom they believe will represent or best represent their interests, including chairing the CCEC. And I believe that it's important that we empower the council president to appoint people to said position that will represent their values as voted on by the majority. Of course, that's quite unfortunate for, like, folks that feel as though they are in the minority. And I think that leadership definitely should, can- And I think that leadership definitely, um, should, can and should strive to take, take into account people of opposing viewpoints. However, I think it's important to empower the people that we elect to be in council leadership with the power to, um, appoint people of whom they believe will support their values.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli?
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to reiterate, like, when I served on Alder Abbas', uh, um, executive committee for the C C E C, and those were very diverse. Alder Bennett was in that, uh, exec, uh, C C E C. And there were quite numbers of very different opinion that served, not only one side of, uh, uh, group that really served on the C C E C. So I just wanna, you know, uh, reiterate that President Abbas was very intentional in choosing a diverse group of people that disagreed with him and also agreed with him. So I just wanna make that motion, uh, that correction from Alder Evers. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna say that I really enjoyed having that interview and that connection with the president and the VP when I was doing my interviews. I think it was beneficial to see where my views are, see where your guys' views are, what do we wanna work on? And either, again, have the, the president have that choice of either having like-minded people, ambitious people, driven people, different diverse people, however they see fit, I think that's still their job. But I think it's important that we just don't put whoever on the council. I think we have to educate the people first of what they're signing up for when it comes to C C E C. But also still giving that responsibility to the president to choose who they want to have as their team. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vidiver?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to sort of illustrate that the fact that Alder Wiheli brought this forward is an indicator of how well our current system is actually working. Alder Wiheli is not currently part of the C C E C, but as a common council member, still has the ability to bring forward any and all proposals. And so in many ways, who's on the C C E C is, is irrelevant because all of us as council members have the same power. And, um, so to me, this is not a place where change is needed. There are plenty of other places where change is needed and, and I don't see this as one of them. And I wanna say how much I appreciate Alder Wiheli for bringing this forward and absolutely understand where it's coming from. And, um, again, just not, not a place that I'm seeing in need right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Wiheli?
Sorry.
Oh, mistake?
Oh, no, no, I, yeah, I think I won't say. So I wanna reiterate that I understand all the comments that has been expressed so far, but I want us to remember one thing. There are people who are interested in serving on the C C E C, but they are not given the opportunity. All of us are coming from different walks of lives. And when there's opportunity and when there's access, then we are eliminating that lens of, uh, expertise from those groups. So there are people even who are not entertaining to come to C C E C because of the experience they had during the, uh, the interview process. So I think sometimes, you know, we always, you know, think of as an, as an institution that we have to look into the unintended consequence, but this is one of it. So if we, we're all 20 elected officials, we represent different districts, we have different experience, different walks of lives. And I think participation and, and collaboration is the key issue here that we have not exemplified the last two years. And that's the reason why I'm bringing in this. It's not just that you can go to the, uh, common council meeting and bring any changes forward. And by the way, even the C C E C, we don't have the decision authority that we need to make. It's just the gesture of supporting and, 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 and being able to be participate in the C C E C and supporting the leadership. And if I'm told that I cannot participate because I have different viewpoint, then that's not democratic. So I hope you will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you again, Alder. Alder Madison?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, where, uh, so like Alder Conklin said I did, you know, like the interview process was fine, like the going through the questions, answering, that sort of thing. But I did wanna ask where, where like, you know, the, maybe the challenges that other folks had about C C E C, were they like captured and organized, you know? You know, was there a method to capture those maybe? Cause I hear what, you know, what Alder Wiheli said, but I'm also wondering where the folks who, I don't know, found conflict with it, did they share that or, you know?
So I, I can't speak to any C C E Cs before the last two years, but my first term, um, was when former, or Sayed Abbas was the former president. And I do remember just receiving an email asking for all, all and any alders who were interested in serving on C C E C to reach out to him. And I think that was the process. I think that'd be an interesting project for maybe an intern or, um, council office staff or someone, just the historical context. Because at least from my perspective, the last two years, um, we went from entirely virtual. I followed the C C E C that former President Abbas, um, followed and felt like the C C E C was very heavy in policy and creating work groups. And the sustainability for me at that time, consider, I was actually asked to join a work group and ended up dropping it because in addition to everything on top of being a new alder, I found that that was not sustainable for me to participate. Now, last year with C C E C where I was the vice president, there we also had an opportunity that was presented because of the pandemic where we were still in an all-virtual, um, platform. So the opportunity to not necessarily have C C E C right before council was something that was very attractive to myself and other alders because we saw how tension-filled some of the conversations at C C E C were or how, you know, the conversation would start and then you'd have to end it because council was starting. So not only did that bring forward wanting to have interviews to provide transparency in the process of what it meant to, um, appoint versus just send me an email, but also being clear, um, around some of the priorities and goals that former presidents, um, Furman and I had agreed to as, as council leadership. And the same thing kinda went this year where we had an opportunity where we came back hybrid. It was something that I wanted to highlight in our recap, but we're the first C C E C that's been in chambers or hybrid, um, since 2020 and the pandemic started. And so something that I reckoned with was it was really hard to find times outside of right before common council meetings to have C C E C, but how could we have efficient meetings? And so that kinda provided the, the space of working together with my vice president, creating shared priorities, gauging with all of our peers. And all of this information was sent to everyone. If they had shared priorities or other priorities, and then from those conversations, I know everybody's calling them interviews and we did use that, but semantics wise, it was more so a conversation about priorities and what we could work towards. And I think another, um, dynamic that I recognized was when you pile on a lot of things, it's easy to talk about a lot of things, but then at the end of the day, did we accomplish what we set out to do? And so having been in council leadership and part of forming C C E C and now leading it, I can definitely say that it doesn't have to be done in the way that it's been done the last two years, but I do want to reiterate the power of all of us that C C E C is an advisory council. We cannot pass anything that does not go to the council. And I've also seen, um, items that were before C C E C that didn't pass be pulled on consent and addressed at common council. I hear the alders saying that some feel uncomfortable to come into the settings, but, um, I don't wanna say that's a personal issue. As the president, that doesn't make me feel good to hear. But also one of the big, um, areas or umbrellas that we focused on this year was how to provide alders with the training and resources to do a high intense, low-capacity job. Um, and one of those was how, how do we provide training for everyone that is about engaging with constituents, engaging with each other, having retreats? And so, um, again, I'm not saying I am setting the gold standard or there's a best-case scenario or other, but, um, in our recap, when I was going through what the work that we've talked about this year, we took on some pretty audacious, um, goals and not all were 100% completed. But I do feel like we have a good track record of saying we were able to accomplish this. We introduced this. We started conversations about this. And so, um, I would say, you know, going forward, leadership votes are in the next couple of weeks. You'll be voting on a new council president and vice president. And as we talk so much about our shared values on the city level, our shared values as alders and even our B C C structure, thinking again about the significance of voting in council leadership and trusting that the majority who votes those folks in are trusting in the leadership of those individuals to do the things. And, um, yeah, I would just encourage folks, again, that alders are members of all committees, maybe not voting members, but you can attend or watch the recordings of all meetings. And I know that that is a big job in itself, but it's possible and it's there. And so, um, I'm not sure if I will have a vote in this matter tonight, but if I was, I would not be in support, um, just to amplify and support and empower who is coming next in council leadership. Not sure, Karen, if you had anything you wanted to add based on your experience? Karen's saying no. So I'm not seeing any other hands in the queue or alders wishing to speak. The motion before us is to adopt. Having heard at least one alder, um, say that they are, would not be in support. Actually, let me just go to roll, cause I think I'm talking for that alder.
Vice President Figaro Cole? Alder Vidiver?
No.
Alder Madison?
Uh, no.
Alder Govindarajan? Alder Conklin?
No.
Alder Evers?
No.
Uh, with six noes.
That motion fails. So that's... Sorry, my computer went to sleep now. And we are consulting with the attorney on if we need to do anything before moving on to the next item. There, there is whispering going on behind me, folks. Those of you who are virtual, but we will report out. Okay, we were just checking based on history, um, to make sure that there wasn't a, what did you call it?
Basically like whether we needed an affirmative?
Affirmative motion.
With this, we know what you don't want to do with it, but what do you want to do with it? But he said it's sufficient to be able to report out.
Okay, so for those of you virtually, just, uh, our chief of staff was wondering if we needed an affirmative action. It's clear that the body does not wanna move forward on adopting the proposed ordinance change in front of us, but if we needed to place on file, place on file without prejudice, et cetera. And our city attorney is saying that we do not, so the motion fails. Um, and so that means we will not, go ahead, Attorney House.
I mean, it is an option if the, if the body wants to recommend a motion to place on file, you can certainly do that as well.
But you don't.
But, but this current motion was not that.
Okay.
There would just need to be a motion at council.
Correct.
And that can be to place on file based upon the C C E C motion.
That couldn't be applied here? It'd have to come from council?
I think we should, I think to make it clean, we should just take care of it because there's another thing and we don't have time to really go back and forth about the nuance.
Alder Govind, question?
Yes.
Yes.
Are we able to reconsider it here and then place it on file?
I, I think if, it probably is clean to just have a motion to place on file, then it's clear what the recommendation is at the council level. I don't think you have to do a motion reconsider.
Cool, thank you.
So if somebody wants to make the motion to place it on file, you can have a vote on that.
I don't see any hands or anyone in the queue from members of C C E C, but I do see Alder Wiheli, Alder Wiheli's hand was first and then Alder Evers.
Thank you, Chair. So I have the opportunity to pull from the consent agenda for discussion for the larger party, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Evers?
Move to place this item on file.
All right, we have a motion to place on file. Do I have a second? Seconded by Alder Conklin. We've had a fair share of discussion already and questions. I will just, let's take this to roll. Again, the motion before us is to place this item on file.
Vice President Figaro Cole?
Yes.
Alder Vidiver?
Aye.
Alder Madison?
Yes.
Alder Govindarajan? Alder Conklin?
Yes.
Alder Evers?
Aye.
Six, six ayes.
All right, so that motion passes to place the item on, excuse me, file. Alder Wiheli, that does not take away any, um, answer to your question earlier about C C later, so. Thank you. I will move us along then to our fifth agenda item, Legislative File 81382, Council Office Updates. And turn over to our chief of staff.
Okay, I'm going to attempt to find the right file here and share screen. One moment. One moment, sorry. Okay. Okay, so there's a couple, there are a couple of new, um, announcements that I wanted to go over with you. We were, uh, working on figuring out the process for what you do if you're out of the country and you want to do alder business out of the country, accessing your blog, et cetera. And, um, what we'll need from you is to contact me. You could also put in a ticket, uh, but, an I T ticket, but you can certainly also contact me with, before you go, with the dates you'll be gone. And then they will grant an exception for, uh, being able to access your city login out of the country. This is a big change from previous, the previous system, but it's already come up a couple of times and I, I, um, I wanted to let you all know, this is the procedure that they've identified. And then also, um, this is a small thing, but if you know you're going to be attending council virtually and you, you have enough, you know in advance enough to give a heads up to Debbie, I'm, she, I'm sure would appreciate just because she sets up things and brings things down. And I get worried about losing your mail, going back up and down the stairs and the cart and so on. So if you, if you have a, you know, if you have advanced notice that you might, you're gonna be virtual, just let us know and we'll, we'll make sure to set up the, the spot appropriately. And then there's just some, some reminders. And then there's just some reminders. So again, if you declare candidacy for a state office, please let us know before April 15th so we can make sure to comply with the 50 piece rule in your case. Excuse me, the 50 piece rule applies when you're running for a different election, not just council elections. And also I wanted to just flag again for everyone that the April 16th council meeting is in MMB 215. And for the first time ever for us, we will be having a hybrid meeting in MMB 215. So that's exciting. And I also wanted to reiterate something we had talked about previously because I just think it's just really important to emphasize that alders are able to access confidential EAP services. So please, if you have any questions, you'd like to access a service, reach out to Arlene or consult the website. It has phone numbers, information. It's free and confidential. And if you need support with a difficult situation, they're a wonderful place to start and we do have benefits that extend to alders. And I would like to just make sure you all are, please, please don't hesitate to use them. And then I just want to point out that we have made some progress on scheduling budget engagement events. And we have five events. Four events are booked and ready to go. One event, we're still working on location. Just getting back, going back and forth with the location to get some clarifications. And so there, these are here. I have them for you on email and also at your desks. And now we'll be working, we'll continue to be working on, for example, the content of the meetings, the presentation with finance, working with the, with DCR, with the language, the community connectors and the accommodation specialists to think about accessibility and language access in the meetings themselves, but also the materials and the advertisement of the meetings. And we, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, and creating materials, we have a lot of work to do, but the first thing I wanted to do was get dates, times and interested alders. And good news, because MMB should be online for hybrid, we are, we think we have time before May 30th to test it and make sure we can use the self-serve hybrid. As you may know, this meeting, CCEC is supported by IT Media Team. And we're not sure if IT Media Team is able to cover that meeting, this budget meeting, but we have the self-serve hybrid as an option. So we're pretty confident we'll get some version of this, which is again, brand new capability. And I think we have enough time to figure it out. So those are what we've got. And that's all I've got and I'm happy to answer questions or take feedback.
Thank you Karen. And a reminder for everyone, these are printed and on your desk if you're coming in person and were emailed to us earlier this afternoon. Vice President Figaro Cole.
Thank you. And when you say out of the country, what do you mean?
I don't, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just United States or United States under?
I don't know if it counts the mainland or not. That's a clarification that we'll have to get from IT. I know for sure another country in two cases. We've had a situation, both contiguous countries with the US, but separate countries.
So in Hawaii, Puerto Rico.
Right, I don't know what happens.
Can we verify that?
Oh, absolutely.
And is this for everybody in the city? Impacts everybody in the city?
Yes, it does. And they're aware of, IT is aware that they need to get some communications out about that for everyone in the city. I have not yet heard whether or not, for example, Hawaii, Alaska.
Rico, Guam, whatever.
Right, yes, correct. I'm not, I'm not sure, but I know that IT will be able to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, time is of the essence. So please contact Karen if you have any questions, need for clarification, but I'm going to move us on and I just exited out of my agenda to our fifth and final, I opened last meeting. I'm so excited for this to be my last CCEC. I'm going, acting like it's my first CCEC again. All right, our next agenda is future agenda items. In case you're wondering, this was an ordinance change or it's required to be on each CCEC agenda. But obviously, the next president will take up the task of creating the agenda. So I'll move us into our seventh and final agenda item, which is Legislative File 82533, 2023 to 2024, CCEC Recap. So I'm gonna keep this brief seeing that the time is already at 5:25. Could you bring up the visual?
Oh, is it the same one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, I can.
No, there are some, I don't know if it's GIFs or GIFs, but my last slide had some moving pictures that I don't think will move for you all, but. A moving picture. So you know how a meme is just a picture, but it doesn't move and it has like maybe a header on it? A GIF or a GIF moves. Let's age ourselves here. But yeah, if you all want to bear with me, I'm not gonna read line by line, but commemorating at least the last CCEC meeting that I will chair and this CCEC that was appointed. Wanted to kind of do an overview and recap of all the things that we've talked about and work that's been accomplished and to thank everyone for their commitment to being a part of this year's CCEC. Can do the next slide. No? Okay, so I thought it was pretty cool. I was kind of looking at the timeline. Obviously, we had leadership elections last year on the 18th. We were able to get our conversations, gauge who was interested and have those and have committee appointments confirmed on May 16th. And our first CCEC was June 6th. Our last CCEC of this body will be today. And we have met a total of 15 times, only three meeting cancellations, I believe. Next slide. So as I kind of shared in the previous two agenda items, Vice President Figaro Cole and I, once we were elected to council leadership, met and created some shared priorities, which was then used to promote and ask for interest in CCEC and to also share any feedback on the priorities that we had highlighted and any changes. So based on those interview slash conversations that we had with interested members, we developed the four following priorities that we worked on this year, which was to provide support and guidance for the chief of staff and council office, to reconvene work to implement recommendations of the TFOGS, specifically with the focus on increasing alder pay and BCC organization and structure, provide and promote training and resources for alders and enhance opportunities and strategies for community engagement. So the next couple of slides kind of shares little bullet points of what we've talked about. So I really want to highlight that also this was the first year, I think for some of us who came in in 2021, that the council office staff was fully staffed with not only a chief of staff, but also were able to add a new position of Larissa's Community Engagement Strategist and then finalize the full staff team with Isaac, our Legislative Policy Analyst? Legislative Analyst. So that's huge. And I will just say that working closely with Karen and our council office staff, I've just seen so much growth and ideas and ideas not just being talked about, but coming to fruition. So I want to applaud you all because your support of things that have been talked about at CCEC, things that are talked about outside of that do factor into that and how Karen is guiding and empowering her staff. Let's see. Said we have our new community engagement specialist. We propose ordinance changes to promote efficiency. So we were just talking about alders being out of country. How can we make things easier for the council office? We hosted reoccurring and specialized training for staff and alders, not just our organizational development courses our HR provides, but contracting with NAMI for mental health and illness, contracting with YWCA to have experience with restorative justice and then with Abba Thakar of Mosaic LLC for our policy and value retreat. And I think a really big thing that unfortunately last CCEC saw a lot more of, but appointing an interim alder is no small feat. And so being able to have a fully staffed council and the addition of Alder Uguir is a really big deal. Next slide. So knowing that the work of TFOGS, there was a lot of recommendations. There's been a lot of talk. This is probably one that obviously was not, we weren't able to say we nailed it, we got all these things implemented, but we did put forward, introduced a ordinance change to increase alder pay. We had a lot of collaborations, conversations, amendments on amendments. Unfortunately, we did not succeed, but I feel like at least in my term as alder, we've gotten the farthest that we have in that conversation. And then just starting to talk about the audacious goal or the lofty goal of reorganizing and looking at our boards, committee, commissions and structures. And so having several conversations and presentations. So I want to give a special shout out to Deputy Mayor Baumell, to our chief of staff Karen and Isaac for the work that they have and continue to do behind the scenes on that. But also to Vice President Figaro Cole for the idea of us using what's before us to decide how we want to move forward and presenting the seven elements of a great city as a guide for us to think about restructuring. Next slide. And providing and promoting training and resources for alders. So I talked a little bit about the specific trainings. We had staff come in and give us presentations. I think our first CCEC meeting was when Director Edgerton came to us and talked about the M365. We've been migrated. We know that there are things to look ahead. We've had Chief Assistant Chief Stedman and Assistant Chief Patterson come before us to give cares updates and updates about work that's being done. We had retreats. We had two retreats, but specifically held to promote community understanding and coalition building, which from conversations tonight is clearly still a need and will continue to be. But then also supported our council office initiatives that equip alders with additional tools and for the staff, like the end of year report, being able to create policies and onboarding, just all of that was from feedback from you all. So thank you again. Next slide. And then our last umbrella area of enhancing opportunities for strategy, enhancing opportunities and strategies for community engagement. Some of those specific trainings were taking into account that we interface and engage with diverse populations and people. And so something about safety and security of not only the council members and staff who are in chambers, but the members of the public that come before us. Trauma-informed communications, knowing that we're dealing with folks who are dealing with all different things in life. But also again, discussing strategies to reduce the length of common council meetings. So we continue seeing an interest and increased interest in our public engaging with us and letting us know what they think about policy we are creating. All right, then my last slide is just to say thank you. It moves! Ah, yeah. I'm excited. I like GIFs, GIFs, whatever you want to call them. But I don't know, for me, when I come to the end of something, I always like to summarize and look back. And even though it may feel like we oftentimes just talked and didn't have a lot of robust discussion, I do feel like that we've accomplished a lot and set a good standard forward as Alder Vitiver said. And so I'd like to thank you all for not only your interest to serve, but for serving on CCEC, for adding two hours onto your Tuesdays to be able to be in attendance with us. Thank all of the staff that presented with us, but specifically Attorney Haas and Karen for holding it down and reminding me and whispering behind me when I need to make motions and do other things. But even the confidence that I've had as a chair of chairing the meetings, I'd like to thank both of you. Y'all, virtual, don't hear the whispers, but. And then specifically our council office staff who put in so much time and resources. We've had presentations by I think Larissa and Isaac, but Debbie behind the scenes and Liz. Everyone is wonderful and we would not be able to accomplish any of that without anyone. So with that being said, I will end there. I see Alder Evers' hand and I'm hoping we, oh, one more thank you to the IT staff. Obviously, you all did a lot to get us to this point and even the training to get me acclimated to all the things that are up here. So thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm glad you all are happy that we did not go past 6:00 PM, I think, once during this duration and hope that continues for you all. Alder Evers.
Thank you President. And thank you for this really thorough and excellent summary of this past year. You've done an excellent job as President. I reminded just at the close of our last meeting how you summarized the long committee of the whole discussion about the budget. That was just top-notch, really well done, very thorough, reasonable, fair, accurate. You seem to have a real gift for this. You've done an excellent job as a leader of our body. And as the Chair and President of this committee, my hat's off to you. Job well done. I hope that you will continue to serve on council. You're a real credit to your district, to your character and just your spirit of service. Well done. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you Alder. Oh no, don't all tune in. Alder Martinez-Rutherford.
I just wanted to second what Alder Evers said. And I have been so impressed with your leadership and your ability to bring together the council. And I am super grateful for this time, you being my first president as I've moved into this position. I'm super grateful for your guidance and assistance through it all too. So that's all.
Thank you Alder. I appreciate you as well. All right, that is the end of our meeting, folks. Yes. Seeing and hearing. We have a second. Yes, Alder Conklin. We are adjourned, folks. Thank you.